Call this meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for November 5th of 2024. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quaidno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our next agenda item is Councilmember Board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes. We have three meeting minutes from previous city council meetings from October 15th, 22nd, and 28th. Are there any comments or corrections on any of these minutes?
Looks good.
Nope. Okay, seeing none, we will accept all of those into the record. Our next item is correspondence. Mary, would you like to?
Sure.
Take it off?
We all received email regarding Sandy Beach costs. I attended Drake's Q and A session on the Sandy Beach restaurant, and I did receive a follow-up regarding the waiver of the rental fee regarding Fly Homeschool.
Great, thanks.
Great.
Nothing additional to report?
Okay. Michelle?
Did you want to have me go last, because we're talking about our?
Sure. Yeah. Steve? Any correspondence? Juan Hile?
Yep, had the Sandy Beach also. I think we all received the invite for the birthday party this afternoon. And then I also received a call from a resident. They were asking about the chip ceiling on Brewster and Badger, that it's only been swept once. I just talked to Randy and Dwayne, and they said that they had gone back and done some additional patching over there. So they were going to look into getting that. They said it was going to get swept a couple more times this year, especially with the leaf pickup. And then I also did receive one call from a resident. They were looking at how to get some information. They felt they had an excessive bill for an EMS run, one of the patient or family member. And so hopefully got them steered in the right direction. So that's it for me.
Sounds good. Thanks, Steve. Your mic did kind of diminish a little bit, so we'll kind of keep an eye on that, make sure we can hear you. Thanks. Okay, Michelle?
Okay, so I got emails regarding the passing of Tim Shenkey. Is that how you say his name? I want to make sure I honored that right. Also, I got the email on Sandy Beach costs. And I went to a memory of life for someone here in town, which resulted in many conversations about Sandy Beach and the referendum language, because it was not like at a church. It was at a different location. So it was a little bit more social. And then I can go into some of the things that we learned about at the listening session on October 24th. We had a really good turnout. It was around, I want to say, 20, 25 people, which in that small little place of, in the library, got packed. We had a lot of good conversation. A lot of the conversation was geared toward Sandy Beach and the financials that go along with it. There was also mention of a lack of senior housing, and specifically, why are, or how can those people plead to developers for more senior housing? There was some continued conversation about century building and getting down the Christmas decorations, but unfortunately, it's coming close to Christmas, so we're just going to keep those up for now, even though we don't have any power over that. Specifically, there was some questions about who was going to be running the restaurant, how it was, how it appeared in the picture to be too big. We talked about the footprint size, being that it was the same footprint as the previous restaurant, and that not many people seem to understand that based on the picture. There was some conversation regarding how transparent the plans of Sandy Beach are, and that there needs to be better availability. Some people have a hard time navigating the website, and so conversations about how can we make that more readily available to people so they can see, as well as there was some conversation about some recent discussion with regard to event space and how City Hall isn't being used. And there was somebody who was upset about the sirens, but then that was quickly talked down because other people were like, well, this is something that we've come to appreciate, this small-town environment. So, you know, it's really enlightening, having those listening sessions and being able to have those conversations, and I look forward to doing it again.
Thanks, Michelle. Yeah, we did have a nice turnout. A lot of very engaged folks, both from the city and a few residents from our neighboring townships. One other topic that someone brought up was the revaluation of properties in the city, and we both said we're not experts on that, but take a look at the city's webpage, because Drake and Sam have put together some really good information about that. And so encouraged them to, you know, look at that and then follow up with city staff. And there was, as Michelle mentioned, you know, there was a lot of conversation about Sandy Beach, mostly focused on the potential restaurant, but there also was some comments about, you know, the recreational redevelopment, you know, kind of the next phases, and people wanted to know when those were going to happen and how they could, you know, participate in that. So, yeah, so appreciate everybody who took the time to come and share their thoughts. I had a very busy three weeks, so more on the Sandy Beach restaurant. I received a number of calls and emails, had a meeting with a downtown business tied to it. And Drake and I had a TV interview with Channel 15 in Madison. He and I were each interviewed, and then there was a citizen who had already voted, who was interviewed. So it was just interesting that they wanted to cover that. So you can check that out probably on WMTV's website. I had a meeting with a couple of ladies in my neighborhood regarding a recent zoning board of appeals meeting and about green space requirements. I got an inquiry about the Rotary Park bathrooms being closed when we still had some nice warm weather, a couple of contacts about the proposed development across from Tyranina Park, a concern about a procession of trucks with political signs that was going through town on Saturday, and a call about sirens in addition to the individual that came to our listening session. I also had a chance to go to a couple of meetings during the last three weeks, and one was with the fire department leadership. So that was really good, great information, just to, they meet once a week before they do their weekly training, and just to hear, you know, the kinds of issues that they deal with, and what they talk about was really, really nice to get a chance to do that. And they're looking forward to the ladder truck coming soon, so we're all looking forward to that, I think. And then I also attended the monthly legendary Lake Mills. Let's see, what else? Oh, and I had a conversation with the Chair of the Parks Board, just checking in on their, the work that you're doing specifically on the city council resolution related to the Mill Pond. So I'm thinking we're going to get some recommendations in the next few months here from that Parks Board effort. Okay, I think that's it for correspondence then. So our next item on the agenda is questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you're asked to hold your comments until the hearing. And we do have two public hearings tonight related to our budget. So if you are interested in speaking on that, we'll take your comments during those public hearings. Public comments can also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages actions by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. If there's anyone online who wants to comment, please type your name and address in the chat feature. So I don't see anyone online other than staff and council members. And is there anyone here in the room that would like to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment for this evening. Thank you. So next is our city manager's report. I'll turn it over to Drake.
Nothing significant to report, other than a thank you to all of our poll workers, not just for tonight, but also the city clerk's staff for all the early voting that went on. We had pretty busy days every day leading up to the election, so a lot of work goes into that, and they're still down there working right now. So thank you to them.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you to our poll workers. Polls are still open for another 50 minutes, so. All right, so moving on, we'll go to council business. So our first item under council business is Resolution 24-34A, related to TID number nine. So Sam, would you read that, the title of that resolution for us, please?
City Council Resolution 24-34A, Approving Boundaries and Project Plan for Tax Increment District Number Nine.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion? Or do people want to hear about it first?
Let's hear about it first.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Drake then, if you can give us the background on this.
This one just got kicked back from the DOA for a, I guess, a procedural reason, and they added the underlying language you see on the second page. They said we needed to amend the resolution in order for them to officially approve it. It doesn't change the creation date of the TID. So this is just something they're requiring of us.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
And TID nine is the Business Park area?
Yep.
Great.
That's the new one that kind of overlaps with TID six, right, and would continue that? I had a question. So with the new language, it says, "Property suitable for industrial sites will remain zoned for industrial use for the life of the TID." So is there property that is not zoned correctly now? Is there anything that needs to be addressed there? Or is this just sort of a statutory requirement that they have?
This is an administrative requirement. They didn't provide an explanation as to why it needed to be added. I'm not aware of any parcels that would be an issue. It's just saying that they can't change. They must be industrial for the life of the TID.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 24-34A.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 24-34A, which is amending the proposed project plan and boundary for TID number nine?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 24-68, related to the Jefferson County Humane Society contract. So Sam, would you read that resolution title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 24-68, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and the Humane Society of Jefferson County.
I move to approve Resolution 24-68, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and the Humane Society of Jefferson County.
You have a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
A motion by Ms. Quaidno, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Any discussion?
Staff comment?
They remain the only entity that can provide the level of service that we require of them. I did speak to the police chief, and they were happy with the service they received the past year. We are asking for the authorization for the full, the higher amount of the contract prior to January. Sam and I will analyze whether our, the interest-bearing accounts we're receiving would have us come out ahead than the 1.5% discount they offer for payment in January.
Thank you for explaining that, because I was actually going to ask about that. So the resolution says that we would pay it in January, but you're saying you may choose to pay the full amount if it's to our benefit to do that?
Yeah, for the discount. Otherwise, we could pay it monthly if we thought we'd earn more interest throughout the year on holding the funds than the 1.5% discount provides.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I just had one quick question. I'm just curious, what was the rate in 2024?
The rate?
Yeah, so I'm just curious if it was 275, 74 per resident for the 25 contract amount. I'm just curious if we know what the rate was for?
You know, I just looked that up this afternoon, and it was like 262, 268, something like that. It was not, it's gone up by a very small amount, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's in our meeting minutes from last December.
Okay, thanks. Great.
And I did go on Fort Atkinson City website and Jefferson's city website to look at their agendas for this week, and they have this item also on their agenda. Pricing's roughly the same, based on our population increase. It looks like their census is about the same as it was. Their population numbers is about the same as it was during the census, and ours has risen during that time period. But the rates appear to be roughly the same as what we're being charged.
Thanks for checking on that. Yeah, I was actually a little bit surprised that the population estimate is 6,800. I didn't realize that we had grown already that much since the 2020 census.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's based off the DOA municipal estimate.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 24-68, which is approving the Jefferson County Humane Society contract?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is Resolution 24-69, related to the city manager contract. Sam, would you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 24-69, Amending the City Manager's Employment Contract.
Thank you. So this is a recommendation of the city manager requesting a slight change in one of the paragraphs in the contract. The council did discuss this previously, so I guess we'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a-
I move to approve.
Go ahead, Steve.
I move to approve Resolution 24-69, amending the city manager's employment contract.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fields, seconded by Ms. Quaidno. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 24-69, amending the city manager contract?
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is Resolution 24-70, which is city manager compensation. Sam, would you read that title, please?
City Council Resolution 24-70, City Manager's Compensation.
Thank you. And this is an annual requirement that we establish, the city manager's compensation for the next calendar year. And as the resolution states, we've been in close session. We've conducted an annual performance evaluation, and very pleased to report that Drake has met or exceeded all of our expectations, and we appreciate your continued service for the City of Lake Mills.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 24-70, City Manager Compensation.
Second. Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call, please, on Resolution 24-70?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item, Resolution 24-71, which is our utilities budget. Sam, would you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 24-71, Resolution Declaring Official 2025 Utility Budget.
I move to approve Resolution 24-71, Resolution Declaring Official 2025 a Utilities Budget.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quaidno, seconded by Mr. Waters. Drake, you want to just give us an overview of this?
Yeah, any changes would have been consistent with the work session. Just a reminder, the utilities budgets don't need to balance like the municipal side do. They're enterprise funds, and they're entitled to earn a reasonable rate of return. For electric and water, that's based off of what the PSC has dictated, and then wastewater is under the city's jurisdiction. If there's any questions, Sam or I can assist.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the utilities budget? No? Seeing none. Can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 24-71, declaring the official 2025 utilities budget?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item, Letter F, is a public hearing on the 2025 general fund budget. So the public hearing notice with the proposed budget was duly published and has been available for citizens to review. So we currently are opening the floor up for anyone who wishes to comment on the 2025 general government budget. Is there anyone who would like to comment this evening? We only have a couple people in the room who are not city staff, so I'll just ask one more time. Is there anyone who would like to comment on the city budget this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing for this evening. Our next agenda item is Ordinance 1270, which is the 2025 general fund budget. This is our third reading tonight. So Sam, would you please do that third reading for us?
Ordinance 1270, 2025 general government budget and tax levy ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2025 general fund budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Ms. Quaidno. Just for clarification, Ms. Schmager, your motion is to adopt Ordinance 1270? Is that correct?
Thank you. Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Any discussion? Drake, actually, do you want to give us any overview or highlights?
Nothing that hasn't been stated before. Any changes are consistent with the work session, as with the utility budget. This is a balanced budget, with a levy increase that is in line with the state allowable levy increase. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions on the proposed general government budget and tax levy for 2025? Seeing none, can we please have a roll call vote on Ordinance 1270, which is adopting the 2025 general government budget and tax levy ordinance?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is a public hearing on the 2025 capital budget. So a public hearing notice was duly published, and now is the time, if anyone would like to step forward and make any public comment on the 2025 capital budget. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to our next agenda item, which is Ordinance 1271, which is the 2025 capital budget, third reading. So Sam, would you please do the third reading for us?
Ordinance number 1271, 2025 capital budget.
Motion to approve Ordinance 1271, which is the 2025 capital budget.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Waters, and a second by Ms. Schmager. Drake, anything additional you'd like to?
There was one correction made to this ordinance. The notice, though, not to the public was correct, but the ordinance was missing in the 2024 item, the borrowing for the ladder truck. So that was corrected. It did not affect any of the 2025 numbers, so the 2025 budget was accurate. So if there are any questions, we are happy to answer them.
Thank you. So the document that is attached to the agenda for tonight is the corrected version, then? So that has the ladder truck included? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Sam.
Yes.
Any comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none. Can we please have a roll call vote on Ordinance 1271, which is the 2025 capital budget?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. I'd like to give a special thanks to Sam and her team for all the work in putting together the budget documents that we had a chance to review at the budget work session. Very detailed, gets more transparent every year, easier to understand. So really thank you. I know there's been a lot of work in the last couple years to get the history in and then incorporate that into the new software. I think Duane was also a big help in that, from what I understand. So thank you again to all the staff. It just gets better every year. So we really appreciate the detailed information and the transparency from staff. Any other comments from councilmembers? Okay, our last council business for this evening is Ordinance 1272, which is amending City Code Chapter 505. Sam, would you read that? This is our second reading of that tonight, so Sam, would you conduct the second reading?
City ordinance, sorry, City Council Ordinance 1272, amending City Code Chapter 505, peace and good order and creating 505-9, sexting by minors prohibited.
Thank you. So that's our second reading tonight. We had some discussion at our last meeting about that, so this will go on to the agenda for our next meeting, for a third reading and a vote. Okay, that concludes council business this evening. So our next agenda item is recommendations for future agendas, so we will have that, Ordinance 1272. Drake, anything else that you want to mention for us?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, well, the polls are still open, and we have a referendum on a Sandy Beach restaurant. So I would imagine that one of our next couple of meetings, we'll get the results of that and have information from staff to help us to make a decision on whether to move forward with the restaurant as proposed. I would just encourage all of us, if you have any additional information that you think you need in order to make that decision beyond what we've received and been talking about over the last several months, you know, let staff know if there's additional information that you'd like to receive, so that we have everything we need when we're going to be making that decision. Anything else from councilmembers? Any items that we expect? Any, anything else from council members? Any items that we expect to be taking up or that you want to recommend? Okay, seeing none, we've finished our recommendations for future agendas, so I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.